Yesterday, and we're gonna listen to the people who come tomorrow, but but that's the part of why we have those zoning things to help guide us. Now, what you're saying is we need to go back and relook at that area, and so I think that.
Someone needs to drive in Rosewood because there's about thirty mobile homes and about ten houses.
So so that goes back to my motion, I agree, and I hear you guys send it. So what I'm asking is that planning the zoning, do that process, so even if it takes for them to rezone the whole neighborhood of Rosewood into multi uh manufacturer house district, we would be okay with that, but we just wanna make sure that we have a process in place, so that therefore, once we have that process in place, that's how we move forward, rather than picking and saying, oh yes, this time, no this time. Work together with planning the zoning to zone that area such as that.
Well, the uh un- unreadiness in having spoken to several of the folks who reached out in the city is, I don't know, four years ago maybe, possibly five, um and I believe it was on Sharon Street. Uh it was, actually, I was in the audience too, but there was a, there was a lady who moved one in, there were no fines or repercussions. Uh and it was allowed to stay, and we connected her with quarter. Um and I I certainly agree with what both of you said, um but I think our timing, because it's gonna take places all this time, and we have folks actually, you know, really begging to come into our city, and we're saying, no. And and I'm saying with no opposition, we understand Rich's Road, we had folks who and their own family, and they don't want the additional traffic. We don't have the same excuse for people's houses, that's a business venture, and it and it came up in planning zoning that, you know, this was a business project, y'all should have done a little bit more due diligence, things like that. But, you know, with the housing thing, everybody doesn't have that wherewithal, and these folks are coming to the city, not doing what previous folks did, and setting it up, so there's there's a bad precedence. And those mobile homes are still here, so to not allow folks who are trying to come through the process and do it right, who are legitimate property owners, and there's no one objecting, it's almost like we're the one objecting, and we don't live over there either. You know, yes, sir.
Well, I love this one.
Yeah.
Uh first of all, it's not that uh I don't like mobile homes or or trailers or whatever. I'm born and raised here, I've been here all my life. The problem I have is a committee that was put together by individuals, not just this this zoning committee, but um zoning committee that we had, are the ones who said that the residents didn't want any more mobile homes, that they want to be R one, that's why it's R one. So I'm not objecting to something that that isn't done, it's in black and white, that is R that is R one. All I'm saying is, if we're gonna change it, we need to keep it and don't change it anymore. Don't nobody ask, don't nobody put in no zoning changes, if it's gonna be for manufactured homes on Sharon Street or in Ty Rosewood, then let's make it that way, because this changing it and then going back and forth is getting me too much. And I don't want anybody to think, I don't want them to move the purview, I'm strictly going by what's in black and white. And it says R one, and that's why the previous zoning committee changed it, I was on council then. And they came to us and said, we cannot move any more manufactured homes in Rosewood, because we've spoken to all of the citizens. They said they went door to door, and all the residents over there said they didn't want any more manufactured homes.
Well, uh this this is a a process requesting it, and and while I agree with what Councilman Williams is saying, um the right for folks to request the zoning changes in our city ordinances, so they're just following it, and council has to decide. Then Councilman Jones.
Yeah, but we wanna make sure that we are the same across the board. When the housing complex came in, they brought a property, they knew the property was R one, they wanted to change it to multi-use. Our citizens came in, just talked about it, and it's like, we could say, oh no, well, we need housing, or oh no, we need this. But then those citizens would have felt like they was bullied and pushed into something. That that area was zoned uh R one for quite some time. Now, I'm sorry that you guys wasn't informed, but that's what that area was zoned in, and so if if it was uh M three, then we would be saying, no, we're against it. We're not saying that we're against it, we just have to make sure that, like, it's hard. Sometimes you have to make the hard decision to go ahead and start moving the city forward as you want. So right now, this is, it seems like we're against it, we're not, all we asking is that we wanna move forward in the direction that we come back with a plan, because then, let's say, in three weeks, uh all one house wants to be built over there and have three, three-story house, two-story house, and five car garages and all those kind of things, and then we just changed all of this, and they come back and they have five people that buy those empty lots, and they start building R one homes, then we're gonna be in another bond, so we're just asking that if we move forward, that we move forward together and on the same page. So asking that planning this only, go out there, do the homework, bring us back the report, and then we'll make make a decision.
So I just.
Yes.
Counsel.
I and I'm not arguing against you, I just wanna make sure that you're fully informed, this application is from July of twenty eighteen.
So does that make not make it automatic?
No, that's an illegal provision in your code.
But it's in our code.
It is in your code.
It's it's outdated, but it's in there.
But.
So it's been that long. Councilor. All those in favor say aye. Yeah, let's do a show of hand vote after all this discussion, I just wanna make sure the record is clear. Ayes have it. Eighteen discussing Consider Ordinance two zero one nine dash one 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 dash zero zero four. Is that what we just did? No, we're on Richard's wrote LLC. For the rezoning of property located on Rich's Road, Purdy Texas, being more susceptible to the issue conveyed to Franklin Dean, Kinsah, and Taloie, our Olasupo, recorded in volume seven thirty-one, page four zero five of the deed records of Walla County, Texas, from R one single-family residential district to R three multi-family district.
Amuda will not approve item eighteen.
Second.
It's been properly moved that item eighteen be not approved, prefer the motion ready for discussion. Any other readiness?
Yes, sir.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Record shows unanimous up there.
Yes. When the planning is all you is looking into the recommendations for that area, can they make sure that they're um, you know, if you look in our community, in our larger tracts of air, with the larger tracts of land in certain areas, they're already, they're they're hitting off in certain zones that aren't zoned, and so that they look at that as well, that's that's gonna make that, could we have the seven point six acres, and I think this was what, eleven?
Uh, yes.
So we wanna make sure that there, when they go to look at all the areas of the zoning, that they look at those too, or 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 not for those areas, but look at other areas.
Look at the whole city.
The whole city where we can fit those, so we so the so the goal is for planning the zoning to say, hey, this area is zoned already what you're looking for, you know, he- here's some options. That's what I.
So basically, uh Ms. Anderson, we'd like P S Z to come back with, take a look at the whole map.
Right.
You know, including this area of this street, and come back with some specific recommendations, maybe based on what's there, what feedback you have from the property owners in the area, things like that.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Does this include all Naren districts?
Uh, the city zoning map?
Right, with the Naren districts.
Yeah, I mean, most of it, I mean, some of it you're gonna look at and say, that's all single-family houses, so you're not gonna say, do we wanna change it to multi?
That that's what you have forbid anyways for the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
That's what that will do.
That's what it was, but no, no, wait, hold it, counsel. That's the comprehensive plan, but we're not anywhere close to that now.
Right.
We have to water contract, have to get money, oh, no, I don't wanna go into that.
No, I agree, it's a long time away, you're not gonna get this back shortly.
Well, with for example, this is about the third manufactured house I know of on Sharon Street in like the last four or five years, at least, if not more. And with all the other things being empty, you know, w- we we need to have a place where folks can buy and bring in a manufactured home. Um, I was told it's supposed to have some area in the city.
Yes.
So you guys take a look at everything, and then tell us where you recommend that area should be, so then instead of saying, no, we can say, over here.
Yeah, okay, I understand that.
So we can, you know, like when people put in the applications, we can let them know, but still, that right to request the rezoning, is that that like a state law, folks have to have that, you see, so it's not gonna be omnipotent anyway, but we do have to respect what's there, but we also have to respect what other folks are looking to do, and their right to request it, and then council's right to vote it up or down. See, so that's a part of the political process.
Right, yes, I understand that.
In fairness to everybody, we just have to be aware that uh whatever it was zoned is, does not negate, there is a process that people by right can appeal or or request, and then we go through the hearings and everything, get the feedback, and then it's voted up or down. Okay, yes, Councilman Jones. Sure, other action, uh discussing taking action on setting a workshop regarding Amazo to Purdy University for sewage processing.
Twenty-two.
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 I moved that proposal.
All in favor say aye. Okay, ayes have it. Okay, discussing take action on setting a workshop regarding Amazo to Purdy University for sewage processing, payment plan proposal, two thousand sixteen rate study analysis. Uh, Mr. Johnson, you have some thoughts and numbers?
Well, we already have the proposal. I I I sent you that proposal. I got a copy of it right here.
Yeah, it's the setup for a workshop.
When y'all wanna do it?
Folks wanted to talk it over.
Oh, okay. When y'all wanna do it? Uh, I'm I'm I can't do it. Uh, y'all tell me. Y'all tell me, I'm I'm pretty flexible.
Would they, are y'all even? Is there a particular day?
Oh, what am I doing before next council?
Right before?
Yeah.
So.
On the night?
So, yeah, next, before your next council.
USW was the most important for the workshop, remember, they had the study with the recommendations? Yeah, the rate study was the part that you wanted to integrate with with J J's proposal.
So five o'clock December ninth.
That's good.
Appreciate it.
Okay, so five o'clock December ninth, um Ms. Bynum, if you would, make a note so we can send a a note to uh Mr. Bostick, of course, we don't need that now, 'cause we got Mr. Jonathan here. So you can let him know that that rate study info, we'll be looking to hear from him and making his decisions, or whatever information he can share with us. 'Cause uh he was looking at some possibilities of, you know, the way they arrived at what we owed.
Yeah, and it actually wasn't Mr. Bostick.
So that becomes a, yes.
Corey, it was um, it was the other guy. No, 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 it was USW, but it wasn't. It wasn't Corey, Corey didn't know the rate study. Is that right?
No, it was Corey.
It was not Corey, like, it was not Corey.
Well.
The written report that we got from Corey was from someone else.
Okay, it might have been his uh his boss. Might have been his boss.
It was the white guy, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, you get so paid if you say that.
I can say that, you can.
Okay. So December ninth, five o'clock. Okay, uh next item, we'll be talking uh twenty-four. Discussing take action on abandoned apartments, other issues, and other health and safety hazard on Echo Street. Uh, you have some concerns about these as well?
I'll just, uh, I think the attorney had gave us uh some recommendation, so I just, I moved that uh attorney start the process of the.
Before I had uh signed up to speak on that?
Oh, I'm sorry, speak, come on, you're right, I'm sorry.
Uh, once again, count uh mayor and city council, I wanted to speak on item twenty-four, I brought this to your attention several minutes ago, and I went by there the last time we had a city council meeting to the property on Echo Street, and it was still water leaking, boarded up, holes in the back of the house. Uh, I went by there today, looks like they've started doing some work on it, but they've got these huge holes in the back of the people's houses. They have uh or pipes exposed, and it's horrendous that any human being would live there, and I got, and I'll just go ahead and say this, I noticed on tape, but I got really upset when I saw what looked like the land on a drive up in a hundred sixty thousand dollar Mercedes to these houses that aren't even fit for human beings to live in. And and it's really important that city council, you know, I I we spent a lot of time on Panther Hill, for what reason, I don't know. But you got places in this city that human beings are living, that I wouldn't put a dog of mine in. And I think that we need to focus on making sure, and you're talking about, I don't know if these people in these old uh buildings, uh apartments, and duplexes, whatever, do they have certificates of occupancy that need to be revoked? Because human beings can't live there, you need to get in your car and drive down Echo's uh, oh, and I don't know that first street that you turn on, but the second street. But go look, get in your car, drive over there, park, get out, and go look around those houses, and see would you let an animal of yours live in that type of environment, and do something about it. I mean, it just, to me, it it it's heartbreaking that, and and then you have other places uh on University Drive, and I brought up to you about Brookside. I mean, these are places that really have issues, that we're putting human beings in. And 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 I just think that you really need to look at that, and before I sit down, I'm gonna say this. I hope uh uh manufactured homes are just as nice as any other homes, if they're nice. And I hope that we're not getting into a racial discrimination issue.
Officer Egleton, uh we went over to the facility that she's talking about, and Officer White came over there also. Do you know, as you sit there, whether or not a code enforcement, ten-day notice or something was written?
I'm not sure on that.
Let me know tomorrow.
Okay.
Because I understand and saw what she's speaking of, and if we're spending all this money sending engineers, USW and all that over to a brand-new place, and we've got people living in squalor and slum-like conditions, with exposed water from mosquito, which is a health hazard issue and that sort of thing, if they're not written up, we got a problem. So I wanna see it tomorrow, because I saw it two weeks ago, and based on what Dr. Brown said is still there today, that's unacceptable. I know Officer White is out, but we don't need him to sign a citation, much less a ten-day notice. We need to double-check and fix all of the city, not one situation that people have a whatever on. Okay, so give me a copy of that tomorrow. If if not, get with Ms. Herndon and get it done. Yes.
Councilor. Um, on this particular property, is it a, I guess my, I I is framed differently, and I need to put abandoned means, abandoned means no one lives in it, abandoned means no one owns it, what are we talking about? Second thing, current, do people currently live there? And is, and if not, are we saying they need to board it up, or are we saying that people currently live there, and we need to, and and so the same standards that, again, part of this is, we don't wanna play politics. The same process exists for for any development, whether it be apartment A or apartment B. But the same people who've been fighting us on apartment A, now they wanna go point finger at apartment B. Health and safety concerns is everyone's concern, not just depending upon where we line up on apartments. And so can someone a- answer those two questions? And then if people are living there, then we need to take the the same appropriate action that we take for apartment C, D, E, and F, when we have those same statements, and so, one, is it abandoned because no one lives there, is it abandoned because we don't know who owns it? And then are people currently living there, or is it boarded up properly, just like the property that's on your street, Mr. Mayor? There were some concerns, they boarded up correctly, now, there may be some issues with the high grass, but as far as, I don't, I could have a property, and I don't have to uh, I don't have to use my property, if I wanna say I have a home and I always wanna board it up, that's my right. And so I wanna, I want to make sure that we're following our own process we put out there, and if that's not, that we issued the appropriate uh information.
It's not boarded up, and people did live there, and it is a health hazard.
So so they're living there now?
What the issue, people are living there, she just confirmed that, and they were living there two weeks ago, when several of us went out there after we got um a request to do so.
Okay, now, who's property is this?
Yes, it's uh Richard Apartments.
I saw that man that was sitting back here with that light blue shirt on, when I went over there today to see what progress they had made, I saw him over there. So, and he said his name was, when they called his name to speak, his name was something Richard. Well, it has on the sign, Richard Apartments, so I'm assuming that he's affiliated with that in some kind of way, but I did see him over there. I saw him over there today.
So so the question is, do we, so two things, if if they're, if they're, if we know who the owner is, again, the same process we're talking about, whether it be Panther Hill, whether it be any apartments, we identify the owner, we have our code person, if people are living there, we on the books, and we just use that process. But what I'm getting, you know, again, we're we're going between whether we use it here, whether we use it here. If people are living there, then we have the appropriate things to move forward, and so what do we need to do, Mr. Mayor, to help move this forward?
Yeah, I mean, council or anything, uh, we're we're checking on that. I wanna see what's written up tomorrow, I guess I should have asked for it two weeks ago, but I wanna see it tomorrow. Because it's just like fixing the other thing, these health hazards, they have a different standard, and it's gotta go. And it doesn't matter to me where it is, but those are health and safety issues that you can see and feel, and that standing water that is in the back of both buildings, all of that, but um I want you to get with, uh you and Ms. Herndon, I want you to get with Ms. Rogers, because we talked about it, and 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 there's a a different process, but I want us to find out what that is and start it, because we've got issues that have been around here for many, many years that have never been council's agenda, so with somebody else making it eighteen times in eighteen months, you know, it it does look like there's some something being done differently. Councilman Jones.
Uh, so earlier, attorney, you had said that we would move the, you start the process of the new code, expectation code.
The International Property Maintenance Code, you you have already approved it.
Okay, so then you you would start looking into how we would go about.
Officer White knows how to use it, and if he has any questions, or?
We're talking about different things, and so.
These are, these are the other issues.
No, 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 not to get us off, I'm saying that there's a, there's a how you get abandoned property to become up to speed, come up to speed, right? So then there's the question on, these properties been operating for so long, do they have the the certain COs, or are they up to code? We don't necessarily have, know where they're currently at. We don't have, which is one of the things we talked about putting in, is a a rental uh apartment, um rental ordinance to where they have to certify every two years or every year that their apartments are up to standard. That doesn't preclude us, though, from actually what the mayor said, sending someone out there, but but I want us to be very, again, I I love the 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 mayor gung-ho about this, but you know, he he's not as on other ones. I want us to be the same, and I and I I appreciate that we want to get this done for health and safety concern, but the question is, if people are living, if we're saying people living in there, you're gonna get on, get the, get on that tomorrow and get the report, do we have to go through the ten-day cite citation, or is that different than what Councilman Jones is talking about? Once we develop the the International Property Maintenance Code, there's a, if they have.
There's varying degrees within it, yeah, so it depends on how bad it is, basically, um.
So do we know, so I I guess you're saying, do we know?
There there are certain emergency provisions within there, and Officer White is familiar with what those are and where to find those, and when he i- isn't, he calls me, and he says, you know, where do I look to do explorations?
So what did he say about this property?
I don't know, but he didn't ask me about this property.
Uh, listen.
But that doesn't mean it's not on it, it just means he may know what he's doing.
He said, when when we first, when I first went out there, the week that I first went out, Officer White told me that he cited them. I went out the, uh, exactly a week later, I asked Officer White, had they made any proof? He said, well, we gotta give them ten days, we gotta give them ten days. I went out there, uh, ten days later, it was still like it was. So he told, Officer White told me that he had given them a citation, and they had ten days, a week from now it'll be an a month.
Well, he said that three weeks ago, that he was writing them up that day, at least giving them the ten days. But on a health, but on a health, on a health and safety thing, it changes, 'cause there were exterior wires, electrical wires all over, there was open running water leaking, you know, so somebody being electrocuted, I don't know if there are kids living in there, because there are families, so, no, it it needs to be, it it needs to be addressed, but uh in 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 deference, this has been out there, along with others, for years. So my issue with, as Councilman Roland so appropriately stated, if you're gonna talk about Panther Hill, you've been on, yeah, yeah, you've been on the council for ten years, going on eleven, and you never talked about this trash. So to 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 alienate one and not do another that you know, if you live here, you should see these things, then that's my issue. Councilman Wallace.
No, I think we all came to an agreement that if there is, if these places aren't habitable, people shouldn't be living in there. Um, so, as Mr. Mayor already stated, that code enforcement to go out there, have a report on it, and then we should have legislation already within the city, where if those those standards are haphazard, that you cannot live there, and we should be able to take appropriate action, I think that will fall under the purview of the mayor, 'cause I don't, I don't think there's anything that we can approve right now, because it's already set in place, so with that, I just say we get started with that process and move on to the next agenda item, so I move that, I I move that we go to the next agenda items.
I had to, okay. I moved the second that we go to the next agenda item, all those in favor say aye. Readiness. Okay, you in readiness?
Quick, quick question, attorney, the, and and I don't know, that may be the reason why it wasn't listed, 'cause we talked about a specific property on Echo Street, is there some litigation going on, and is there an order where there is? Can we be in full disclosure, do, does anybody know about this, and before we send, before we send city staff to go do something, when there's a court order, do, is is, does anybody know about any of that?
Well, if you're referencing a court order, why don't you tell us what?
I'm asking, again.
No, you don't reference a court order out of the, out of the blue.
Mr. Mayor.
Tell us what you know.
You are the one in charge, and I'm not pointing fingers, I'm asking you a question. If there does, on this, is this the property where there may be already some litigation? If, it's either yes or no, if it is, then we move on, if it's not?
I have not received any litigation that precludes us from enforcing city laws. So whatever you know about litigation is irrelevant if we've got people living in haphazard conditions, and obviously you know about it, but you never brought it here, but it doesn't matter.
You have the power, Mr. Mayor, to 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 put, to say that if you wanna move the people out of the apartments, you can do that right now. I'm talking about the the fact that if we're trying to make them make improvements.
Well, hold on, hold on, hold on, you're off the motion. That discussion is not on whether or not to go next to discuss city strategic plans. Any other unreadiness on the motion?
Yeah, there there needs to be a conversation about litigation, and that, and y'all can talk about.
He can get with the city attorneys, let me talk to me about legal issues.
If I had any knowledge of litigation that we shouldn't be discussing here, I would take you into executive session on my own.
So again, the litigation has nothing to do with the city of purview, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have the same right? Ayes have it. Discuss city strategic plan, Councilman Wallace.
So I know that Mr. Anderson was talking about the comprehensive plan, but I wanna make sure that we're all on the same page when it comes to the process, so I want us to start moving forward and have a workshop, uh just so that we're all included in the process. Um, and especially because this is something so comprehensive in terms of how we move the city forward. I think whether it's economic for B, it's the council leadership, or any entity, citizens involved that uh we all should be able to know, because the comprehensive plan is a document that should be moving the city forward for years to come. I just wanna make sure that everyone has an understanding of the process of that, uh, as it begins, so no one's in the dark before it.
Mr. Mayor. I know that the E D C is working on that, so if you wanna share something with. I know the, the EDC is working on that, so do you wanna share something with what Councilman Wallace brought up?
Let me make this clear. There's a difference between a comprehensive plan and a strategic plan. Mr. Anderson spoke to you about a comprehensive plan. You have on the agenda strategic plan. So I'm trying to find out what is it that you're really talking about? Are you talking about the comprehensive plan, the planning and zoning is working on? Or are you talking about the strategic plan that EDC is working on?
I'm not talking about the strategic plan. Even, and Councilwoman, uh, Wendy, she just told me about that today, but no, I'm talking about the comprehensive plan.
Well, you have on the agenda strategic plan.
I, I apologize.
Uh, I move that we move item twenty-six.
Okay, uh, item twenty-seven, discussing take action on gifts that the city has received from third-party entities, Councilman Jones.
Uh, I move that this is.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Twenty-eight, discussing ways to have more fishing government, Councilman Wallace.
Uh, I saw two things, uh, I went to a Waller City Council meeting. Uh, so one thing they do is when they have an agenda item, uh, that may be little information, they give one-pagers. Uh, which is basically a, a paragraph of what, um, is gonna be on the agenda that way. They have questions, uh, beforehand, they can ask that. Uh, so I know me personally, I'll start doing one-pagers for my agenda items. Um, so I'm asking if y'all wanted to participate as well. I think it could be a good thing, um, to help us. Uh, ask all, ask a lot of the questions that we need to beforehand. Um, and then secondly, um, I know that with the, uh, we had an agenda ordinance. Um, where we are supposed to get our packets on the Wednesday. Um, and turn, and city council attorney, our items subsequently on that Monday. Um, but I also had a talk with the attorney about that, um, because there may be specific items. Um, in which we may need to put on last second depending on the importance of it. So I will be bringing that back up, uh, just so we can have discussion on that. Uh, just so that we can choose the most feasible option, so we can be most efficient but still be reasonable.
I will, I will, John.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Done.
How you doing, man? You having a good day?
Me, it's almost the next day.
You had a good night?
Yeah, like one more hour, we'll be on tomorrow.